We'll go get you one, Robert.
You won't be going there?
No. Give or not give?
This, Robert? What is that?
It's a fire. You're lying.
I have to remember that.
It is. We accept on this session. The end will start at 6:30 and we'll start running.
I've never heard of that.
There's no fire in here.
Do you see it? Yeah, more than thirty.
Uh-uh.
Oh, you can't see it. You can only see it over here.
You can see it a little bit over here. Second call from the air. How are you? Check that way. No, down outside. So, pass from the door to get in. Well, that's the main. That's sorry, how are you there?
How are you doing?
Please, do you want a burger? Do you want a burger?
Um, yeah, it's all regular.
Okay.
No, I, I, dude, I think we could get at least two hundred families to it.
How are you?
How many were there from Sunnyvale outside of it?
Ready? Ready, Rachel? Good evening, our time is six thirty-two. Let me call to order the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for Monday, January twenty-seventh. For the record, all council members out present except Mayor Proton Finch. Council can have a motion to, Rachel, you're going to do a recess in executive session, right?
Motion to go to executive session.
Yeah. A motion made by Mr. Clark to adjourn into the executive session. Have a second.
Sir.
Seconded by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed? Motion passed, six minute. Now, time is six thirty-three.
And you would state the executive session items.
Yes, I will do, thank you very much. There are three items on the agenda, that is Project PEC Two, Project AC, Project FS, and Section 551 dot O seventy-two. Deliberations about real property to deliberate purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation on, in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the government body in negotiation with a third person. Rails to rails.
Thank you. Officer Mayor, can you state that it was six thirty-two when you called the meeting in order?
Yes, time was six thirty-two when I called the meeting to our plans.
You might have, I missed it.
So, that's why I asked him. I was asking her. The question I asked her is if you're denying the mark of your ass, that they already come back. And if you put those Iowa, so we can compare.
Right now, I think what she has tried to do is put it into Iowa where it's on her state.
But they came on the view, they probably didn't see her. So, that's why I was asking her, so if that's the case, I'll, I'll.
But she said, well, I put it downward and I'm for something. They won't see it for them. I put somewhere else in the contractor.
Yeah, they, with the review, they can't, they can't, uh, when they survey it.
What do you want to say? You wanna, you wanna go on? Which side of the knee?
Probably knee.
No, you don't have to, because there's something, I've been telling her, quick topic. Because there's some things that...
Right, I think with the review, like she just reviewed one, and she said...
Maybe.
And whatever, they make a decision or something, they gotta come out into the record, we didn't even say what they did. They're talking. You have to meet your city council.
I'm going in, I'm traveling.
Oh, they might ask. Too much. We were alive, yes. If there's something interesting, definitely. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. How do you like it moving back here?
I love it.
So much better.
I'm home.
How many years were you over in Jackson, Chicago?
Three and a half. You know, especially where we had a great, I loved my house. You know, so, and I love definitely that area.
But there's more stuff to do.
Right, well, it, this area is just, you know, grew up here.
I get that.
It's helpful.
I feel that way.
Families here.
Yeah.
I can, he's right there.
It's a lot. We just look like those morning shows. Good, I was confused when it said... Might be able to time out or something. All right, it's good, going, pretty good.
There's ladders, there's ladders inside.
Yeah, I wish, I had an aircraft here to take around. Grove. Yeah. I'll have an extra. I'll have an extra. I attack about, keeping it up. Nowadays, there's so much talk there. It's crazy. At least, I'm financing it, manage the, manage all the...
Just look at the dirt. They expect them. They'll not expect them.
When they'll come back, they'll come out. It's mine. So, that's what I'm... I was like, this is... Probably a little... Fish. Yeah. Can't see. She gets upset with me because I fly all the time. She doesn't accept me. Things like that. Man, it was pretty, it was a pretty rocky day, as I'm just doing that thing. That's a problem, someone... Customers that are demanding like that. Yeah. I believe that that's what's... It's, yeah, it's, it's a, uh...
There was, there was like...
So, yeah, it's, it's, you know, it just wants to do with the...
Stars.
What you know?
You know, not much.
What kind of snacks do we have tonight? Doing really? I'm going home.
What is it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, it's a regular weekend.
How are you?
I'm good, yourself? Take care. That's right.
Hey, you guys, Robert. You like it? My two things?
How are you?
Captain, I need to hold the treasure. How are you, sir? Yes, she starts to march. I've never seen that before. That one, back, back up. Thirty because there, we... On in Sunnyvale.
No, I'm just... Surviving.
These, you know, I had to go in Friday morning. They, like, yes. They push my shit in. Very, very hard memory. But, well, they did that pretty good, but I went to, uh, I went to bury that afternoon. Worked on it. So, I've got my business, I'm about to... You won't get one. Or they did their thing, I mean, they're not playing it all. But this, be that it, it was slow. So, that was, uh, you want to work with it. Weather was some... That was, uh, the, the... I had, yeah, that was baseball. Sure, sure. Sure. All the part. It's fifty-five, it's a little, field never been. Fifty-two at one. Somebody's, they just like the name, it's really... You don't want to get ahead. Yeah, I was back there. I got a little ball. Oh, no.
How are you doing?
Now it's fourteen, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna break it up.
Good, Harry. Hey, Harry.
No, not till next Monday. Right now, we're not at that point yet. I bet you that's what you know, Mike, when you're around me. Yeah, really, these are period passes, they're a long, long hair. No, it's a long, long. First of all, you just talk to the watch, put in the shapes themselves.
You got them all? It could be.
The apple.
Well, just for the late, we had a couple of important topics talked, so, thanks for your patience. I got to announce the decisions of the executive committee session first, right? Okay, now time is seven thirteen, we are back in the regular session. I can confirm that as a result of the executive session, item number one, section five fifty-one point zero eight seven, economic development, project pick two, project A C and project F S, there are no decisions to be made. And section five fifty-one oh seventy-two, deliberations about real property, rails to rail, there are no decisions to be made. With that, we are back in regular session, now time is seven fourteen. Thanks for joining me, and Mr. Allen is going to lead the invocation.
Let's pray, Father, we thank you for this day and the opportunity to be together as a town. Father, to serve this town and to represent this town and the decisions that we make and the things that we do and say. Father, I pray that you'll be with this town as it grows, that you will keep your hand on it, providing direction and guidance and mercy and grace in all the things this town does. Be with us tonight as we make decisions concerning this town. Father, we love you, we thank you for all the grace, in your son Jesus Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, unto the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and please be seated. Brenda, do I need to talk about the quorum or that's already done?
I'm sorry?
The quorum, it's already done.
No, you'll go ahead and start here, because you do the wrong.
Okay, okay. Good evening, council and the members of the audience, thanks again for joining us. If you are here to talk to the council today on any of the items posted, I'm going to request that you fill in one of these forms, it's the public common forum form, and you can find forms right outside the door. The next item is a special ceremony. Ceremonial swearing-in of Sunnyvale Police Department Sergeants Sergeant Scott Evans and Sergeant Benton B.J. Brummett. Good evening, Chief.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight's a special night, we are tripling the size of the Sunnyvale Police Department. We had a very competitive process for these sergeants' positions. And the cream of the crop rose pretty rapidly, and it was obvious that these two officers tonight were the best of the best. They bring with them over four decades of law enforcement experience combined, and really looking forward for them starting so they can help me out, and I know that they're really excited about it. So this time I'm going to ask Sergeant Brummett and Sergeant Evans to come forward and with their family, so we can pin their badges on and swear them in. We're going to administer the oath of office, I was a little nervous because the badges got here like Friday afternoon at four, so we were sweating a little bit.
All right, sir, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I am Ben Brummett.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Sergeant?
Of the Office of Sergeant.
For the Sunnyvale Police Department?
For the Sunnyvale Police Department.
Of the State of Texas?
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability?
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States?
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I just want to take a couple of quick seconds to welcome back Sergeant Scott Evans, and also welcome B J Brummett to Town of Sunnyvale. Take one picture of the police chief. Come on this area. Mark, come on. Start from the left. Okay, let's start from the left. Susan, you didn't join us? I want to thank all the family members who came and joined us. This is a very momentous occasion in the history of Town of Sunnyvale. This is a big deal for Town of Sunnyvale, we appreciate each one of you for being here. And also welcome both the sergeants to Town of Sunnyvale. The next item is introduction, introduction of new or promoted employees, Liz Stark, utility billing clerk.
Yeah, so Liz, we're really excited to have her on board. She's been, she worked previously for Stevens Trucking for seven years and then Hunt Oil for five years, so twelve years of administrative experience. She's taking the seat of Darby, who was recently promoted to court clerk. So very excited to have Liz on board. And then the second employee that I wanted to introduce is William Kearney. William, there he is. And William, you recognize the last name, he's lived here his entire life, and he has been promoted to Assistant Public Works Inspector. So really happy, you know, a lot of work we've been doing on the structure of the organization to allow opportunities for career pathing, and so it's exciting to see him move up in the organization. But we do have this street sign, Mayor, that you need to take a picture with the new staff with.
Okay.
Thank you.
I also want to recognize, I know I see a couple of our citizens who served in the Police Citizens Committee, I want to thank your service to make this Sunnyvale Police Department a reality, thank you for your service. Next item is announcement pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one dot zero four one five, the mayor council and staff may report on the following items. Expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about the holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming town council events, information about community events, announcements involving imminent threat of public health and safety. Counsel? Ms. Seegan?
Mayor, I want to bring up, just to kind of get it back out into the public's eye again, you and I recently attended a CERT Citizens Emergency Response Team. We spent a couple of the past Saturdays going through the, somewhat the preliminary engagement of what this group does, and it's been advertised both in our newsletter and on the website. It's really quite interesting, and I think it's fairly important that we get a lot of people involved with this. Our emergency responders are awesome people across the board, but when something serious happens, very, that impact a number of people, we don't have enough bodies. The area doesn't have enough bodies. And if something happens on the north end of town that involves a number of people, let's take the tornado for instance. Having the background knowledge of what you gain going through the CERT exercises is vitally important to know what to do, because you might be the first person on scene, and I hate to use that term because that's the term that those guys like to use, but that's the term that kind of got ingrained into us during these two eight-hour classes, and I hate to take too much time, Mayor, but I think it's really important. At the end of that eight hours, we both received a certificate, this is a FEMA certificate, this isn't something that they just put together on a, on a computer somewhere, although they did print our name with the computer. But there's some value in this, and there's more, not so much about the piece of paper, but the value in the information that's presented to you, and it is significant. I've probably got ten pages of notes. Of course, in my drawing, handwriting anymore, it's kind of hard to read them, but I probably could, it probably easily could have taken a hundred pages of notes. I also looked at it, not to belittle what they were doing, but I also looked at it as a very good refresher to my Boy Scout training. Remember Wade here went much further in Boy Scouts than I did, but there's so much more, there's so much that you learned there that you could have forgotten so, those so many years ago, back when we went through it, and I think it's very important. And the reason for making this comment, both for the members of, the people of the public that are here at the, at the meeting tonight, but those watching, is that let's, let's do what we can, we, we realize everybody's lives are busy, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on in our day-to-day lives, but what's, I think, vitally important is that you be prepared to serve in the case of a disaster that comes up. And it's not necessarily the ones that we know about that are going to happen, but like the tornado when it came through, it happened, and we needed resources, emergency responders needed resources to help deal with the walking wounded or whatever condition people might have been in, and I think it's very important that we do this. The chief is going to continue pushing forward to set up some programs, hopefully we can get some going on in Sunnyvale, and I invite each and every one of you to get a hold of the chief, get a hold of Sajee, myself, anyone on council, anyone at the town, and let's see what we can do about putting together a group of people that are prepared to deal with the instances that could occur that the emergency responders just don't have the capacity to. And with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Seegan. Other additional announcement from the council. Staff?
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of real quick things, I wanted to let you all know that the new fire truck will be in at the end of the month, so I just want to encourage you to be watching for an invitation to a push-in event that will hold shortly after it arrives. Obviously, we don't have the exact date yet because we're waiting for the delivery date, but that'll be really fun to, just an old-fashioned fire truck push-in to the station. So the other thing is I did want to just recognize and thank Erica Madden. The mayor's state of the town address was held this last week, and she did an excellent job putting together the annual report, which will be mailed to all households in lieu of one of our quarterly newsletters, so everybody will get that. And then also a thank you to Erica for bringing home Councilmember Allen's idea for the stickers, just to boost community pride, these are now available, you can get them at the front desk, and just have to give your address and your utility account number and/or. So thank you for, Councilmember Allen, for coming up with this idea, and thanks for Erica for bringing it, bringing it home, thank you.
Erica, you did a phenomenal job, and I want to thank you also, it was really well done. And obviously Susan has a lot to do with us, but thank you. Other additional announcements. Okay, if not, moving on to the next item, that's the public forum. I'm going to invite citizens to come forward and speak to the council on any matters other than legal or personal matters or items on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak to the council at this time, please come forward. Now, when it's coming forwards, we're going to close the public forum. Moving on to the next item, recognitions. Today's a funny day. Item number six, special recognition of Sergeant Scott Evans by Sunnyvale's DSA deputies. Good evening, Sergeant Tillery.
Good afternoon. I was just told I had to have a speech in ten minutes, so I've got that quickly. Scott Evans, would you please come up here? Would just like to say on behalf of us Sunnyvale deputies, thank you for your dedication to the residents, to the town, and us Sunnyvale deputies that work with you. The energy and devotion you have displayed is above and beyond what is expected. You're a great sergeant, a great friend. We wish you all the luck on your new adventure, and we hope the new Sunnyvale PD understands what an asset you are to their police department. If you need anything, I'm forty-two feet down the hallway, just holler at me, and I'll see you in the morning.
Mayor, council, I just want to know, for me leaving, it took, it took me leaving to get stripes on Kevin Tillery.
Next item is the presentation of a check to Muscular Dystrophy Association from the Sunnyvale Fire Rescue Team. Good evening, Chief, I'll come by.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff, how are you all this evening? First of all, that I do want to congratulate Chief Hawks on, on getting his hard work, his showing, tripling his, his staffing. I know how difficult it is by starting departments, and he's doing an excellent job, so thank you for that, sir. This is the first time that I've ever brought anything up to really help me read through this, but this is an important reading that I wanted to bring to the attention of the Town of Sunnyvale by the Sunnyvale firefighters. They came to me a few months ago, MDA, Muscular Dystrophy, is a charity for, for getting people well and, and helping them through ALS and related diseases for worldwide research. The Sunnyvale Fire Department in the past, my understanding, has done collections before, and they came to me a few months ago and said, hey, we'd like to do another, fill the boot, if you will. Muscular dystrophy has been more than sixty-five years of fill the boot, been a strong firefighter tradition, giving families muscular, with muscular dystrophy in home, hometowns across America, hope for the future and the support today. So it has been a tradition of the fire departments all over the nation, and proud to say that our, our guys was out there standing on the curbs and, and getting a lot of support. And with that, tonight, I've asked the firemen to, to come, and also one of the representatives from MDA, Kathy Bowden, she is here to receive a check. We were able, in the short time that we were out there doing it in the weather, one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, so. Good job, guys.
See if you're a part of that. Thanks, thanks Kathy. Great job, guys, thank you very much for your service again, Kathy. Okay, moving on to consent agenda items, item number eight, nine, and ten, I'm going to. I'm going to ask that we remove item number nine from the consent agenda and we approve consent agenda eight and nine. Do we have any, council, would you like to remove any other items from the consent agenda?
You don't have to remove it, I don't think.
I don't have to?
No, I think I can just state that I have a corrected copy of the January 27th minutes on the dice for you all to review. The top part of it stated that council member Freeman and council member Egan were absent and they were not absent, they were present at the 27th meeting. So, that has been corrected. So, just approve it with those changes.
Okay, with the caution. Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Okay, so we have three items on the consent agenda. Item number eight, minutes for January 24th, 2020, minutes for 27th, 2020, and agenda item report and the, consider approving the purchase of two new pumps for the Meadow Creek lift station. Council, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items eight, nine, and 10 as presented?
So, move to approve.
Second, motion made by Ms. Egan, second by Mr. Allen to approve consent agenda items eight, nine, and 10 as presented. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Mayor Protem Finch is absent. Moving on to discussion and action item section of the agenda, item number 11, discuss, consider, and act upon a request by Doug Stewart with the Texas Heritage, surveying for a minor plat for Wootlin Aces lots one and two of block one located at or about 360 Michael Lane. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council. The applicant is representative of the request and the property located at 360 Michael Lane. The request is to plat the lots into two tracks, or two lots, I'm sorry, the tracks into two lots. Now, the property is zone SF3. The area in which the properties reside are locally, located in a relatively old part of town that did not have the current lot size requirements in place at the time when the area was developed. Noting this, several variances were received prior to the submission of this application and when they were granted for lot width and setbacks for the existing lot one and the proposed lot two. And overall, this is just finalizing what was approved by the Board of Adjustment. Planning Zone Commission recommended approval.
Can I have any question for the staff? The applicant here? Would you like to speak to the council, sir?
Sure.
Do you want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Name is Dallas Watlin.
Yeah. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Rashad, you know, hit the nail on the head. That's all we're trying to do is divide these two lots, so.
Start building the house, or?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Council, any question for the applicant? Thanks, sir. I'm going to open up public comments at this time on this item. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, please come forward. Now, when it's coming forwards, we're going to close the public comments. Council, are there additional questions or discussions on this agenda item? If there are none, can I have a motion with respect to agenda item? I think it's 11, right? No, it's 11 again. 11.
Yes. Motion to approve agenda item 11. As presented.
Motion made by Mr. Clark to approve agenda item 11 as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 12, discuss, consider, and act upon a request by Randy Early with Weir and Associates Incorporated for a replat for Sunnyvale Collins Retail's lots 3R1 and 3R2 of block A located at or about 184 South Collins Road. Ms. Angel? Or that could be Jackson.
Want to do it? I'll do it.
I saw your name.
Counsel, the property was originally designed and received a site plan approval in 2006 and was developed as one lot with several proposed shopping center buildings, type buildings. Phase two included the existing building foundations directly abutting the northeast that were never constructed upon. In 2016, the property owner decided to replat the back portion of the property to create two lots, but yet kept the front portion as fronting Collins Road as one lot. Now, we're in 2019, 2020, and they have decided to subdivide the front lot. Now, you'll have lot 3R2 and lot 3R1. The intent is to develop lot 3R1 and eventually sell that off. I believe they've already sold it off. This is contingent to, this process is contingent to selling the property. And staff has received the proposed site plan to complete this development to be presented next, next month. Noting all the, the owner's desires to subdivide, subdivide the property and several variances were received in order to allow for that to happen. The Planning Zone Commission recommended approval and staff recommends approval.
Okay, I'm going to invite the applicant here, sir. Would you like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to Sunnyvale.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Randy Early. We're in Associates 2201 East Lamar Boulevard, Suite 200E, Arlington, Texas. Staff's been wonderful to work with. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, council, are there any questions for the applicant or for staff? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I can do open up, this time for public comments. So, if anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council, please come forward. Now, when it's coming forwards, we're going to close the public comments. Council, are there additional questions or discussions on agenda item 12? If there are none, can I have a motion with respect to item number 12?
Motion to approve item number 12 as, as submitted.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to approve agenda item 12 as presented.
I'll say.
Motion second by Ms. Egan. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Congratulations, sir. Moving on to agenda item 13, discuss residential garage orientation regulations, including, but not limited to J-driveway, J-swing access garages. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council. Town staff was asked to place this agenda item on, this item on the agenda for council discussion in regards to J-drive oriented garages. J-drive garages are an approved style of garage noted in the Unified Development Ordinance that are being constructed primarily in our newer developments. This discussion is presented to, to discuss any possible issues with the current allowed orientation or regulations. Staff has provided some of the existing J-drive examples in our newer subdivisions, as well as the regulations in the Unified Development Ordinance that allow such development of those J-drives.
Okay. Council, before we start the discussions, I know we like to hear citizens' input, so I'm going to ask for public comments if there are any. Now, when it's coming forwards, we're going to close the public comments. Council, I'm going to open this back to you for your discussions.
Mayor, I'll open discussions since I was the one that asked to, to bring this up for discussion. The purpose for bringing this up, I had a lot of conversations in the town about J-drives, specifically to the front, not to the side, but to the front driveway entry. And honestly, I didn't even know that those existed in our town until recently in this last development, particularly right off the Jobson Road where they're building quite a few of them. After driving around and, and looking at these, it, it seems to me that this probably doesn't fit what I think the rural intent of Sunnyvale was, at least originally. I think the intent probably was to be the J on the side, not to have a front car entry, probably to protect the front of the, the static view of the house. And it occurs to me when you, when you're looking at this, that what, what happens now, because most people don't park their cars in their garage. If you've got a three-car garage, you probably put one car in there and the rest aren't parking the driveway. So, now what we've done is we've created the scenario that maybe we really didn't want to begin with, and that was the driveways, parking cars in front of the houses, and we've kind of created the scenario that maybe we didn't want to begin with. Obviously, it's an assumption on my part and we haven't had a lot of discussions here. This is not to be meant on the tackle of anyone that's got a front-entry garage. I've had those before in the past and I've got relatives that live very close that have those, but I also know when you have three, four, or five kids, those cars park right in front. So, my question to the council is, and I don't know that we need to make the decision tonight, I, I think without having previous discussion, it bears reason that we probably spent some time looking in the community, looking to see if this is an issue or not, but not knowing where our town was in the history, it certainly appears that we're making a change, not intentionally maybe, but there's a change being made. I can tell you, I've looked at a lot of satellite imagery and, and seen a lot of pictures that maybe it's just something we want to take a look at. So, you know, my, my suggestion, the reason for putting it on here, wasn't to address anything with alleys or front-entry garages or just simply what we see in this picture here. Thank you whoever did the pictures too, by the way. And there's no cars in these pictures, so when you're looking at this, there's no cars here. But I think it's, I think it's a worthy discussion if we're trying to maintain a certain rural appeal, is this really what we intended? Did this just come up on Jobson Road recently? Is there another alternative? I don't have an answer to it. It's not something I necessarily want to dial on a sword on, but I think it's something that popped up that is at least worth bearing to take a look at.
So, the options we have is the, the alleyway entry, the front entry, and J-entry, right?
You said the options?
Yeah, but the front entry is, is that front entry allowed or not allowed?
Front entry is not allowed. This is a J-drive, but yet it is in front of the home, front of the main elevation. You have J-drives that are on the side, which I think Mr. Allen's was speaking to, that has been the norm. I think with Stony Creek, these last two phases, you recall that the developers asked and requested to remove the alleys in Stony Creek 2E and 2F. And the subsequent home builders, they only have so many floor plans to fit on these lots and the best way they can do it is with this J-swing type configuration. I think what comes into play is whenever you have this J-swing configuration with a three-car garage and it pretty much protrudes quite a bit in front of the front of the main home, doorway entry. But I wouldn't say that is out of the norm. It's probably just a little different from what has been typically developed in Sunnyvale.
Council, are there additional discussions on this topic?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and say, I'm, the J-drive itself, I don't believe is the issue. It is the one where you literally have the garage in front of the entire house and that J-drive goes that way. You know, it's almost, as I said, it almost brings the full front of the house way up front and has the quick little entry in. I get the idea behind it. You know, the developers want to put as many houses on lots as they can. Not having the drive that goes completely around the side of the house means that the lot width could be a little bit more narrow, which means they can stack more houses. I do think that it bears the discussion if that is what we actually really want in the town, because we definitely don't want the front-facing garages for the exact same purpose. And is this something that, I mean, that we agreed to without knowing exactly what we're getting into and then now as we see it, we're kind of saying maybe this isn't something we'd want going forward? And again, I, I think that it's definitely worth discussing further, because I, I get Ms., I get Mr. Allen's point and what he's trying to, to, to drive at. But again, it's, I, I think it's the, there's one of the pictures where you, you know, it's definitely the ones where you have the garage well in front of the house. Not the ones where it goes in the backside of the house, but ones that it's really right there up in front, that, you know, it's not a forward-facing garage, but it, all intents and purposes, acts, you know, fairly similar to one.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Ms. Wade?
I think there was some consideration to the fact that we, we did not want alleys. That has been somewhat of a discussion for a long time, is the values, the upkeep, the maintenance, so forth of alleys. And that's probably what led us to some other considerations. I think the other thing that we're fighting is if you're going to allow half-acre lots, you don't have a lot of options of where you put that garage, because if you decide to put a driveway down the side, go into a back J-drive, not only have you taken up a significant part of the backyard, but you've also taken up a considerable part of the side yard, which makes the house look very elongated, for lack of a better word right now. Now, I don't have any designs of anything like that and, and I certainly don't have an objection to looking at other options, but I think is, the smaller the lots get, the harder it is to put driveways that go to the back of the property. It takes up side yards, it takes up backyards. And most people don't do things in their front yard, but they want to protect as much of the backyard as they can. So, we've got to be careful about that, but I don't have the objection to further discussion.
It really comes down to the, the floor plans that are available for the home builder, because I'll say in the homestead, we have these newer phases that do not have alleys, but yet those, the home builder that's over in that area, they have side entry J-drive or they're going back and put, it's kind of awkward, but they put the garage in the rear. That is the floor plan. It was typically for a rear-entry garage, but they're trying to find a way to put a home on the lot. This home builder, I won't call out any names, they're, they have a, I don't think they have a side entry plan, but that doesn't restrict them from being able to develop the property and they just so happen to have this, this configuration.
I think, I just think it bears discussion and consideration, maybe not any resolution tonight. And to your point, those houses you mentioned are behind my house with the ones with the J, and, and they are wider, and I thought that actually is what a J-drive was in Sunnyvale, until I started seeing these pop up in the front side, so.
Is that house a small and large?
Oh, no. Those are half-acre lots with side-entry garages. They look really nice. You know, we recently got beat up pretty bad for taking a look at small lots, so I'm not sure that small lots is a real issue. It's, it's just an aesthetic view. It's my observation. It was a conversation I've had with some people in the community about, well, you don't want front car garages, so this is the same and maybe worse. It's just, it's, it's just a view. It's just a conversation. And maybe larger lots with a J-drive on the side is okay. But anyway, again, these pictures don't show any of the cars in the front. And I think, and that's okay. Again, this is just my opinion, is that we ought to take a look at it, maybe drive through the community, look to see, and if we come back and say it's not a problem, then okay. Again, this is not a topic I'm trying to dial on a sword on. I think it's a topic that's new in our town, similar to the change on the fence issue that we went through and it just popped up. So, I think it bears worth taking a look at and it's really my hope and desire is we can just take a look at it and decide, hey, is this really what we want? Do we need to restrict or not restrict or let it go?
Actually, Rashad, how far back did you go in your research to find out when this started coming up? Or did you go, I mean, it's not like you had to go very deep, but?
I really didn't look into when it actually began. I just know that it, we had more of an, more prevalent developing, builders developing these lots, these type of homes whenever the alleys were removed.
And the reason I asked the question, maybe I should have prefaced it first, but I seem to recall when we moved here a long time ago. And I don't remember while I was on P&amp;Z that it ever changed, or even the time I've been on council, that it was ever brought for us to change, but that it seems that I recall from way back that the garage door could never be in front of the front building line.
Well, it's not.
Well, that's, yeah, obviously, here, yeah. I mean, it's in, in front of the front building line. Well, yeah, you're right, because you're calling the front wall of the garage the front building line.
Right.
And maybe that's where part of the hickey is, because, and I agree with what, remember Allen said, as well as Freeman and Wade. Allen said, as well as Freeman and Wade, you know, it doesn't add to our rule, when that garage is, when the door is in front of the main residence, maybe that's the better way to say it, when the garage door is in front of the main residence, that puts the garage in front of the house. So maybe that's a piece of it to look at, because there's another thing that gets accomplished along the way when you do this, that drives larger lots, which drives kind of where we're wanting to get to.
I researched other communities to see if they had this similar concern. I only found one that kind of addressed it with the regulations, and they didn't necessarily prevent it, but they only allowed a maximum distance that the front garage, or they said an encroachment, could be away from the front elevation of the home. So that would limit, you know, it to, if it was, you know, 25 feet from the front elevation of the home, maybe a two car garage rather than a three car garage, but they also did allow for that third car to be facing the right of way. So if you've seen the proposals with the J drive, two car garage, and then you had the third car facing the right of way.
Because one of the other thing, you know, we wouldn't have noticed this probably as quickly if this, if one of these houses would have been sitting on, I'm just going to pick a number, a two acre lot. You probably wouldn't realize it, because it becomes a matter of scale. How much land is around the house? How big is the house sitting on that piece of property? You just, you don't see it. And you don't see as many of them in succession in a row. So there might be that piece that comes into the equation as to, as you're looking at it, I mean, you, you're the man that knows how to come up with the answers, so.
Yeah, we probably didn't see three car garages very prevalent in our societies until recently. I think I grew up with a one car garage, and then we got three car garages, but we parked one or two cars in them, the rest are restored, which I think a third car is something that's probably new in our society, no matter what the culture is you live in. Yeah, and again, this is not a topic that I'm trying to die on, or want to stir up any heated discussions unnecessarily, but I've spent a lot of time driving through Holland Park, and I lived there for a while. They've got some front entry garages that you'll never see, and the reason for it, it's a side front, it's not a front front, so it's on the side of the property recessed in the back. It's, and there's, there's all kinds of variations. So, again, this was just looking at the cars in the front, particularly with a third car added to the new dynamics of our society. Is this the, the look you want in our town? And again, if anybody here has a front entry garage, I am not hammering on anybody at all. I hope my sister's not watching this, because their cars, cars stack up real quick, so the question is, hey, is this what we want or not? And again, I don't know that tonight is the night to try to resolve that. Maybe we all need some time to go take a look and see visually, what is it, do we like or not like, and then get back and, and let's talk about it again. And Rashad, thank you for, for pulling these pictures up, and I actually forgot about the third car garage, so I appreciate you bringing that up. I bet you when Sunnyvale wrote this, Jim and Mark might know better, maybe even saw you, we, there just wasn't third car garages in the societies back then. So that adds another dynamic to it.
Right, right. So I'd like to look into this more, so I'd say this, can we move forward and just kind of keep on talking about this? I'm not sure how the best way to do that is, but I don't think we need to keep on rehashing it tonight. But I think it's good points. And I would, I would say, you know, after we just look at the recent proposal for the developments that came before us, and we looked at front facing garages, we looked at these J drives, you know, like this, looking at these pictures that Rashad pulled together, you know, having the garage take up half the front of the house, you know, actually a frontward facing garage actually may look nicer, you know, and, and some of the frontward facing garages that we were looking at, actually I think looked nicer than this big garage taking up half the house, you know? So I think, I think we need to look at this and see what, what we want here, what the, what the end goal is.
Mayor, can we table this?
Yeah, we absolutely can table, I just want to make sure everybody get a chance to discuss it, obviously, you're trying to force a decision, you're trying to get some thought process going. Are there any action items on, action item on staff at this time, or this is something for council to kind of think about and come back to council, or to staff?
Yes, I would say, kind of like Mr. Allen said, drive around, kind of get your thoughts together, and if y'all would like this item to be placed back on the agenda, just let me know.
Yeah, that sounds good, Mr. Allen. That's the counsel. Appreciate you. Again, so moving on to next agenda item, that's item number 14. Discuss, consider, and act upon accepting a proposal submitted by Chipper's tree service for brush removal behind the public service building.
Yeah, Mayor and counsel, can this work?
Mr. Creed, good evening.
Yes, sir. I don't know if y'all are aware, but all the brush we pull out of the creeks and, and take out of the right of ways, we've been piling it up behind the service center over there, and it's, it's gotten, it's gotten pretty unruly and pretty big. We keep cramming it tighter and tighter, but we keep bringing it in, and we're about the end of the season where we bring a lot more in. So it was tasked with, how do we get rid of it? So we come up with this quote, this, this bunch here says they'll remove it for, for the price.
Counsel, any question for Mr. Creed? Okay, I'm going to open up.
How have we gotten, how have we gotten rid of it in the past?
We burned it.
So is that an option now? A big bonfire?
My, I'll let Susan speak to that. My understanding was, we didn't want to do that anymore. I, I think, I think the property behind it's got a lot of tall grass, and we had built up a berm, and we were struggling to, to keep up with it, even with the berm, and it, we had an antiquated fire truck out there we'd post up, but it wasn't, it wasn't probably the best thing.
And we are discussing going ahead and purchasing a chipper, so that in the future, as they bring it in, they could chip it up and easily dispose of it, or make it available for people in the community if they wanted that. But this photo is very deceptive, because if you go, Mr. Wade's been out there with me, and it is a very big pile, and, I mean, with the amount of staffing we have, if they, we set them to just trying to chip this up, it would be weeks and weeks and weeks of work. It's not realistic. As much as I hate to spend the money, I think we need to get on top of it, get rid of it, and then be able to maintain this. But this pile was here when I arrived a year ago. So I just would like to get this taken care of, and then we can move forward in a better manner.
Okay. I'm definitely in favor of getting a chipper. I think we've talked about the before, be able to chip up.
The additional concern there is, you can see it well in this picture, is the proximity to lineage, and we don't want that thing to get out of hand and damage that building.
Okay, I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 14, please come forward. No one is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public comments. Counsel, are there additional discussions on item number 14? If not, can I have a motion with respect to 14?
Motion to approve item number 14 as approved, or as submitted.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, he's the second.
Mayor, I'm not sure what our motion is here, I'm confused.
So the motion is to, let's see, accept the proposal, right, for an amount not to exceed 15,800, I'm sorry?
So, by state law, we don't have to go through a competitive bidding process, but you know that it's like. Oh, thank you. By the project matrix, you know that we've had multiple people out trying to get somebody to take this from us, but this is above my signatory authority, which is the reason it's coming before you.
So that's the motion, is to approve the spin of that then? Okay, very good, thank you.
Second. Okay, motion made by Mr. Freeman, second by Mr. Clark, to approve the agenda item 14 as presented. Have you heard the motion? Additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Moving on to item number 15, discuss, consider, and act upon purchasing GATAC in-car video systems, mobile data computers, mounts, and body worn cameras for the Sunnyvale Police Department from Trinity Innovative Solutions. That be you, Chief? Could you, Chief, one more time?
Mayor and counsel. This is hopefully to wrap up the upfitting of these vehicles. This will finish getting us all the necessary equipment that we need to get in our squad cars, so that when they arrive, they can, it can all be installed. So that's what this is. It's the mount for the computers, it's the computers, it's the in-car video systems, it is the body worn camera system that they all integrate together, and it's also the redaction software, if we need to release something to the media that needs to be redacted. It's also our evidence management system and cloud storage that IT has been working with me on as well.
Okay. Counsel, question for Chief. Thank you, Chief. I can open up for public comments at this time, if anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 15, please come forward. No one is, no one is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public comments. Counsel, are there additional discussions on item number 15? If not, can I have a motion with respect to 15, please?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item 15 as posted.
Motion made by Mr. Allen to approve item number 15 as presented. Second by Ms. Regan. Have you heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? If not, all in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Moving on to item number 17, I'm sorry, 16. Did I say 15 earlier? Okay. Item number 16, discuss, consider, and act upon authorizing the police chief to add to the purchase price of feeding for the 13 Sunnyvale Police Department vehicles from Dodge City of McKinney, for the vehicles we purchased. Chief?
Dodge City is where we are purchasing our vehicles from. They also have an outfit division. Most of the time when you purchase the cars from them, the upfitting is just part of the purchase. We hadn't figured out what we wanted in those vehicles at the time, now we have, and they gave us a quote, and it's coming in well under budget. We had 14, 127 per car, and if you do the math on this, I think it comes around to about 11,000 a car.
Counsel, any questions for Chief at this time? Thanks, sir. Can I open up public comments? If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 16, please come forward. No one is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public comments on item number 16. Counsel, are there additional discussions?
Chief, did you get the storage boxes that you wanted in the backs of the vehicles?
Yes, sir. Good. There's even one for the investigator car.
Okay, good, thanks.
Any other discussions or questions? If not, can I have a motion with respect to 16, please?
So moved to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Regan to approve agenda item 16 as presented.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Have you heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Moving on to item number 17, discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of ordinance 20-03, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, amending Chapter 3 of the Code of the Town of Sunnyvale by adding Article 3.1500, public and semi-public pools and spas, providing a repealer clause, providing a severability clause, providing a penalty not to exceed $2,000 for each offense, and declaring an effective date. Mr. Key, welcome back, sir.
Mayor and counsel, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Staff, we've actively been researching an ordinance that's related to the public and semi-public pools and spas in our area. Many of the other municipalities have implemented a like ordinance that we presented to you tonight. They've implemented this based on the safety and welfare of their citizens. That's the reason why we're bringing this ordinance to you as a first reading tonight. We're looking at the safety and welfare of the citizens of Sunnyvale, and the intent and purpose of this article is to provide the requirements for the inspection and operation of public pools, spas, and any, and any possible interactive water features that may be within town limits of Sunnyvale. It also provides for the issuance of revocation of permits for the operation of those pools, spas, or water features and fountains. So I'm here to present that ordinance to you and answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any question for staff? Mr. Wade?
There's a lot of material here that's way over my lack of engineering ability, but with regards to fountains and water features, are those requiring permits, or what exactly would you do to a fountain?
Typically, what would, the way we look at it is, is it depends on the depth of the water, if we're going to determine if it, if it is going to be a swimming pool or a spa. And when we look at the determination of the water, you're looking at the depth, and you're looking at 48 inches. That determines it becoming, becoming a swimming pool or a spa, which then becomes a safety issue.
That's water depth.
That's a water depth, yes, sir, yes, sir. And so that's what we're looking at. We're more focusing on the swimming pools and the spas than we would be the water features at this time, just from the health and safety perspective for our citizens.
I think that portion is in there, if you consider like the, we won't probably have that, but splash pads and fountains like downtown that people run through and stuff like that, that's where that is meant.
Okay, just, we've got a few, as you know, water fountains, and
We do.
Perhaps there's other water features being talked about, just exactly what were we going to try to do with those?
Right, I think what we're looking at with this ordinance, as Rashad had mentioned, it more focuses on if they're actively using those as splash pads, or as little swimming pools for children to play in and stuff, because at that point, we have to look at the health and safety of our citizens and our children, to make sure that all the adequate safety requirements are in place that's mandated by the state.
So does semi-public include private pools?
It doesn't include, it's just semi-public and public pools. So right now, currently, we have five. I'm assuming you know which ones those are, in our HOAs, and then in our townhouse, town homes, and so those are the only ones that we have, that we're looking at to make sure that they have proper adequate safety features and safety equipment in place to protect the citizens. I'll give you an example, last year, I actually had to close two public pools because of safety issues, because their gates were not securing properly, they were being left open where any child could just walk right in and fall in the swimming pool. So we acted as the authority having jurisdiction to go ahead and close those pools until they had the safety features in place. This ordinance is just going to reiterate that. What this ordinance does is allow us, as an, as an annual inspection, to be able to go and perform that inspection and make sure that it's safe.
So I hate to call specific locations, but I'm going to, because I need an answer. This doesn't affect the water feature in the homestead pond?
No, sir.
And it doesn't affect the homestead, the water feature in the Lupton Pond?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wade, additional question for staff? Thank you, Mr. Key. So I'm going to open up public comments. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 17, please do so. No one is coming forwards, so I'm going to close the public comments. Counsel, are there additional discussions or questions on item number 17?
Mayor, just real quickly, yeah?
Yes, Mr. Allen?
There's, there's a lot here that, I'll be honest with you, I don't know what our existing orders are, and looking through this, even going online and trying to read the changes, it's a little bit hard to see exactly where the changes are. This is only the first reading. Can we get a copy, maybe, we're still trying to go line by line tonight, an email copy of the highlighted changes, so we can compare those?
Well, there's no changes, this is a brand new ordinance that we're bringing before council.
So we don't have anything right now?
No, sir, we don't have anything right now. This is the reason why we as staff felt like we needed to bring this to you. This is the reason why we as staff felt like we needed to bring this to you. Based on some of the criteria that we had last year, we feel like we needed to move forward to have something in place to be able to protect our citizens. So this is a brand new ordinance.
Yeah, I'm personally not opposed to the ordinance at all. I'm just thinking about government overreach. I hate that word, actually. And who's going to manage? Who's going to oversee all the, I was looking through the filtration. Who's really going to oversee that? Is that something the town is going to oversee? Or is that just going to be when it gets brought to our attention?
No, it will fall underneath the building officials' responsibilities to maintain. What it's going to be, it's going to be an annual application that they have to apply for that prompts us to be able to go out and perform an inspection. So what that does, that allows myself or the code official that's in place to go out and perform a safety inspection. That also allows fire department to go in and perform a safety inspection. Number one, to make sure they have proper access.
Do we have anyone right now that's trained in sciences, biologist or chemist?
Well, if you
I think that's what caught my attention.
I understand. You're talking about the pH, you're talking about the pH levels and the different variations in the water.
Right.
We don't have anybody that's trained to do that. What we are doing in this ordinance is we are requiring those that are maintaining those swimming pools. So your HOAs or property management companies, or they hire a professional pool company to be able to come in and maintain that water and keep it at the certain levels. They are required to be certified. They can take different certification tests through Garland. Garland does a certification test. Or there's other areas where they can take a certification test. This just guarantees that we have the proper people maintaining the pools for our citizens and that they're making sure that they're at the correct levels for them to swim in.
Okay. Thank you.
And I did have a lot of questions on this ordinance as well, but it was reviewed by the town attorney. And if, to your question, Councilmember Allen, if there is a complaint and we're unsure of if it's being maintained properly, if there's some issue that arises, we can send it to a third party for testing as well.
Is this going to, is this going to impact currently a great deal of what's going on with the HOAs? And that's okay if it is. I'm just kind of curious. Are they going to have to rip out fences and change filtration systems?
No, no, it's not going to affect anything that's in place right now.
Okay.
No, what it's basically going to do is just going to prompt them to come notify us that they're ready for us to come to an inspection prior to opening up for swimming season.
And the pool, the pool enclosure requirements are contained in state law anyway.
Correct.
And we did some of that last summer.
Mm-hmm.
Where we had to make some corrections.
Correct.
So I think everybody's pretty much caught up.
Yeah, it's an annual permit, what they do. So they would have to renew that permit annually. We haven't set a specific date on that. Typically, most of your swimming pools open up around May, usually around the holiday. So we were going to try to set it at a certain date. If you so choose to move forward with this ordinance and approve it, we're going to reach out, send out notification to all the HOAs, all those that have the semi-public or public pools, and give them a timeframe to be able to make sure all their ducks are in a row. And I'm going to work with them closely to make sure all of that's done. So it makes it an easy process to be able to have that application turned in, us go out and perform the inspection and then move forward.
Are there additional discussions? Again, this is the first reading, so we get to come back and talk about this one more time next time. So with that, can I have a motion with respect to seventeen, please? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve this as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Allen to approve agenda item seventeen as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman. Have you all heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed six zero. Mr. Kapriang recommends, since there are so much discussion, let's not make it a concern agenda item. Let's make it a discussion item for the next council. And if council think about other items or hear from HOA or other entities, you know, I recommend that you ask and that staff prior to the meeting if possible. If not, let's discuss in this meeting here. Okay, moving on to agenda item eighteen. Presentation from the Code Compliance Focus Group that was appointed by the Town Council on October twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. Mr. Key?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I think I'm getting the clicker here because we have a little PowerPoint presentation to give you here.
Mayor and Council, this was a temporary group that was appointed by Town Council that met three times to facilitate objectives and prioritize those based on community desires and needs. The objective of this focus group was to clarify feedback received from the town community survey. So what I'm going to do here is I'll put a little PowerPoint presentation together for you based on some of the things that we had and some of the things that we talked about in the meeting with our focus group. And so when you look at the PowerPoint, why? Why did we have the focus group? Well, in two thousand and nineteen, a citizen survey provided an ambiguous result. That result was in such question that we didn't know which way it was going. And so Town Council, you gentlemen, directed staff to create this focus group to facilitate the results of this survey. The group comprised of citizens, and we met three times to look at the survey and come up with some ideas and some results. Some of the members of our focus group, I don't believe any of them are here tonight. Mr. Stephen Clary the second, Ms. Cindy Bernowski, Ms. Sherry Bellows, former Mayor Jim Fopp, Mr. Caden Turner, and forgive me, but I'm going to try to pronounce his name very well, Mr. Rajith Murli Ghaharin. That's a very hard name to say. They were a part of the group that met three times last year. And so we, as a code compliance division, we have kind of comprised some of our own vision statements and our own mission statements that varies from what the town of Sunnyvale has. Because as a division, we look at, we're looking at things from a code perspective. And so our vision statement, when we look at that, it's a community where all residential and commercial properties are maintained in a fashion that emphasizes an aesthetically pleasing town, that encourages community pride, preserves neighborhood integrity, projects the pub, or excuse me, projects the public health and well-being and maintains property values. That's where we look at from a code compliance perspective. Our mission statement from code compliance is to conduct a comprehensive code compliance effort that fosters voluntary compliance, affects prompt correction of noted violations, and that is consistent, fair and equitable in its application. Code compliance is to protect the health and safety of all residents, visitors and the livability of the community by assuring compliance with the town's land use, environmental and construction codes. And when you look at code compliance, we have put, I guess, some values and guided principles together for our division. And so when we look at those, our values and guided principles build upon the town's goal of cultivating the hometown atmosphere within the town of Sunnyvale. In accordance with these core values, the Code Compliance Division has adopted its own divisional values and guided principles. And you can see the values that we have at the top of our list is number one, customer service, because we're committed to providing a professional and courteous service to our customers, our citizens and our coworkers. We have a value of respect. We value the opinions of our customers, our citizens and our coworkers. We don't just take them for granted. We have a value of accountability. We will maintain a high level of integrity. Our code officer is here tonight, Robert, he's right back there. He is held accountable. He holds himself accountable along with our department holding him accountable. And he does an excellent job at what he does. We have a value of working together as teamwork. We're a small division, but we work together accordingly. And we recognize that they, that we're stronger together than when we are apart. Sometimes do we agree to disagree? Sure, everybody does. But we usually come to a solution to be able to move forward with that. And then we have a value of empowerment. Our division takes ownership in accomplishing the town's organizational goals. And so we've empowered our code officer, Robert, to do some things that you'll see later on in this presentation to be able to move forward, to help our citizens be able to understand what code compliance really is. And then, of course, our value is excellence. We're experts in our field, or at least I'd hope we think we are. And we like to strive to improve our services as we continue to work within the town of Sunnyvale with our citizens and with the different developers and builders and various other things. Our department overview kind of looks like this. We have a Director of Development Service, Mr. Rashad Jackson, serves as our director. And then below him, it would be me, the building official or the code supervisor at this time. And then we have one code officer, which is Mr. Robert Canada, who basically serves the whole town of Sunnyvale right now. Now, we do work with other departments and we do work with other employees. When things do come up, they can notify us, let us know of different things that are going on, and then we can handle it accordingly. But that's pretty much the chain of command that we have here right now with our code compliance division. As you can see, code compliance is responsible for various regulations, including the Property Maintenance Code, the Town of Sunnyvale Code of Ordinances, the Unified Development Ordinance, additional functions which include abatement of violations, requiring or sometimes utilizing third-party contractors when it comes to substandard structures or various things where we need to go and abate properties. We have to maintain third-party contractors to be able to do that. All of our departments in the town of Sunnyvale routinely engage in a number of different types of activities. These type of activities can generally be divided into four basic categories. When you look at your categories, you have your regulatory categories, your day-to-day operations. You have your council, your constituent, your citizen service activities, and then your strategic activities. We in code compliance, we try to follow those day-to-day operational activities. Robert has a specific route that he runs on various days of the week throughout the town to be able to look at different things such as bandit signs, such as banners that are out in certain times and various things like that. And so he makes sure that he drives the major corridors on a daily basis, looking for those items to be able to address them. Do we catch them all all the time? No, I'm going to be honest with you, we don't. Sometimes we may drive through and there's nothing there, and then they sneak it in behind us. And we don't catch it until the next day or later on. Or they put it out on the weekend. We do work in conjunction sometimes with the Public Water Department. They help us out sometimes over the weekend and notify us when things are going on so that we can address them back on Monday morning to take care of that. Some of the goals that we put together as a code compliance department was number one, you keep hearing me say code compliance, is because we looked at a name revision. We wanted to change it from code enforcement to code compliance. Because when you hear the word enforcement, what's the first thing you think of? Well, I think of tickets and I think of the officers, writing tickets. That's the first thing I think of. So we feel like it, from a staff standpoint, compliance sounds a lot better because it's a softer word. And our goal is to be able to have compliance rather than have enforcement. And so we look at it from that perspective. And so that's one of the things that we looked at that was a goal from our perspective. We did some research with legal. We verified that that is something that a change we can make to be able to move forward. And hopefully, we would want your blessing on that, to be able to make that change. One of the other things is, is a door hanger initiative. I did not bring one with me. I apologize. That is something that we actually put into place about six months ago, eight months ago. It's just a friendly reminder. What we're going to do, our code officer, myself, if we're out in the field and we're driving by and we see something that just doesn't look right, let's say your grass is higher than twelve inches and it's beginning at the, it's, there, thank you, sir. It's at the early mowing season. This, yeah, I'll just give you this. You can pass it around if you want. It's at the beginning of mowing season. And we don't necessarily want to send them a notice of violation in the mail right away saying, you better mow your grass. We're going to put this little door hanger on their door. We're going to check that box. It gives them a little notification, hey, we're just a friendly reminder. We want to let you know your grass is a little high. You might want to mow it. Now, if it continues to stay that way and nothing happens, then yeah, we'll go to the next step and we'll send out a notice of violation. But this is something that we've already implemented, that we've been using, and we found that has been very viable to be able to pass out on the doors. And we've gotten good responses from it. People have called us and said, hey, I got this door hanger on my door. Yeah, it's just a friendly, okay, I'll take care of it this weekend. Great. Not a problem. We appreciate you taking care of that. And then we move forward. Third goal is, is the high grass signs, whoops, I apologize, the high grass sign for empty lots. I went back too far. This is something that we want, we are looking at. I know our director Rashad is in the process of drawing up a sign, a friendly, nice, beautiful sign. We don't want something that looks, you know, mean or looks at you like, you better do something. So what we're wanting to do with that is we're going to initiate that on a lot of your commercial empty lots that are out here, maybe up the Collins Corridor or uptown east or something like that, or up, up.
Beltline, Beltline?
Yeah, Beltline, thank you. I apologize. Where we see high grass. And so what we can do is we can go out and post this sign. We can send that property owner, because a lot of times the property owners aren't here locally. We can send them a notice of violation in the mail, but we've also posted the sign. This reiterates if you, a councilman is driving through town and you see high grass, but you see the sign, you're like, oh, they're on top of it. They're handling the situation. It also helps the citizens to understand that we're out patrolling and we're doing our job. So this is something that we're working on. This is a goal that we want to implement in the real near future. Number four is the property maintenance compliance. We want to be able to stop, prevent, correct, neglect, deteriorating property as it affects on the appearance, the quality of life and the overall aesthetics of the way it looks. I will have been here with the town of Sunnyvale in March of two years. Since my interim time of coming in here, we have, I don't want to say torn down, but we have taken away a couple of deteriorated properties, deteriorated homes. And by all means, they were unsafe. They were unsightly and something needed to be done. And so we moved forward with the process of demolition. Did we have to spend any town money to do that? No. Most of the property owners worked with me very diligently to be able to get that taken care of. And so that worked out very well. Do we have a process to move forward if we ever have to do that? Yes. Do we want to? No. But if we have to, we will. But we take it very seriously in code compliance about property maintenance because we know as well as you and council and citizens, you want to live in a beautiful town. And you do live in a beautiful town, and we want to keep that beautification going. Fifthly, we look at the public awareness. And so we want to assist and educate the community with questions and concern, maybe about the public health, the safety, the welfare, with the environment, with maybe the neighborhood by doing, maybe doing neighborhood meetings, maybe going in meeting with some of those HOAs, explaining them the different situations, having some public announcements and maybe putting some informative handouts together to maybe put on our website, to be able to put through the, with the water bill so that they can see some of the requirements or some things that are code violations, that they may not know are code violations. And then number six is, I don't want to say it's a big one, but we look at, we have a rental ordinance within the town of Sunnyvale. In the two years I've been here, I've found that this rental ordinance, a lot of people didn't know we had it. We've been diligent and our water department's been great for us. When people come in to open up a water account in their rental home, their first question is, have you had a rental inspection? Or have you applied for a rental inspection? And so they immediately come over to our department, on the building department, and then we're able to proceed accordingly. What does the rental ordinance do? Rental ordinance basically allows us to go in and perform an inspection, which is a health, safety inspection, to make sure there's no exposed wiring, there's no leaking water, there's no detriment to the person who's going to live there. Making sure all the windows are good and solid and they're not cracked and broke. Making sure there's no rodents or any creatures running around the house. Different stuff like that. That is something that we are still working on. These are all goals that I put before you that are goals of myself and Robert in the Code Compliance Department, supported by our director and an upper town staff. What the committee recommends is, the committee recommends a strong focus, number one, on public awareness. They feel like we agree with creating informative handouts and distributing our water bills or on the website. They feel like we don't have that information out there yet. And they feel like if we move forward with it, so we're kind of on the same page as what we have as our goals and what some of the committee's goals had brought to us. That was one of their big ones, was public awareness. Number two was higher standards for home occupations. Now, we do have ordinance, or we do in our Unified Development Ordinance, we do have requirements for home occupations. But they want us to take a little bit different look at it. And so right now, we're maintaining standards set forth in our UDO. But what we're going to do is we're going to review other municipalities' regulations. Some are benchmarks. to do is we're going to review other municipalities' regulations, some of our benchmark cities, and look at their regulations. And then also, when we look at that, if we come up with a solution or a possible change that we want to look at immediately, we're going to partner with legal to verify that that could be a new statute, that that would be okay for us to move forward in that. We've had some concerns with some home occupations within the town of Sunnyvale. There are certain ones that are allowed, there are certain ones that aren't. And so it's kind of, it's kind of a gray area in some cases to regulate. You have to look at it in a certain perspective. I've had a couple of home occupations that have been brought to my attention, and after conferring with legal, they were legal, I mean, they were legal conforming home occupations and basically allowed to continue doing what they're doing. The other thing is higher standards for storage of recreational vehicles. What we're talking about there is, is the committee had a concern with a lot of people storing their fifth wheels, their travel trailers, in the front build line of homes. Concurrently, right now, in the UDO, it talks about storing them either behind the build line or on an approved surface. So when we go and we read Unified Development Ordinance, that tells us from a staff perspective, well, if they're behind the build line, they meet the UDO, but if they're on a driveway, they also meet the UDO. And so we can't enforce them moving that travel trailer. So what we're going to do again, we're going to look at reviewing some of these changes, we're going to confer with legal to see if we can make those changes, and if we can, we'll move forward with that. What we have to do really is we have to look at the different land masses with that, because you do have some properties that have 10 acres. Well, how are you going to enforce them? Well, you can't park your RV on these eight acres because you have 10, because it has to be behind the house even though you can't see it from the road. So we're going to have to take some of that into consideration when we look at making some of those changes based on, based on the lot coverage. So we're going to be looking at that also. And then fourthly, they recommended beautification. They recommended that we maintain the standards that we have in our UDO, dilapidated fences, high grass, inoperable or abandoned vehicles. They asked that we concentrate a lot on that, focus a lot on that, and I think that's what we're doing. We are getting a lot better at that there again. We have one code officer that covers the whole town, and he does a very good job at what he does, but he has a hard time being in more than one place at one time. And so with me also working in conjunction with him, I'm also having to deal with all the building that's going on, so it kind of makes it hard for both of us. But we do our job diligently. I hope we're doing it well. If we're not, let us know. We want to always make it better. And so those were the recommendations that the committee brought to us based off this focus group, and so that's why we're here to present to you tonight. And so now I'm going to just open it up to any questions that you guys may have.
So, Mr. Key, so I'm assuming there's going to be follow-on actions? These are high-level, right? Create handouts, or review with legal, I'm assuming? Are there going to be follow-on action items?
Yep.
They'll be added to the project matrix, sir.
Gotcha. So the committee, the citizens committee, are they coming to a close now?
Yes, sir, they're complete.
Yes. Nice. Thank you. Count any questions for Mr. Key. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, so, Mr. Keys, thank you very much for going through. This is very detailed, and it's pretty amazing what you're doing. I like your idea of calling it's code compliance. I think that's a good change. I also want to thank Stephen and Cindy and Sherri and Jim and Camden and Rajith for participating in the committee, the citizens committee. So thank you all for participating, and thank you for sharing your ideas. I look forward to seeing the next wave of how you can implement some of these ideas. So thank you very much.
You bet.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah, Doug, I've forgotten a little bit about the rental housing ordinance. Is that an annual inspection, or is it just when they change tenants?
Just when they change tenants.
So would it be reasonable to look at an annual inspection?
We can. I know there are other municipalities that do do that. We can, we can look at that and put that as a project and do some research on that.
I know it's time-consuming, but might be worth our time to...
Sure. I do, I will tell you, though, that we do, in the rental ordinance, we do address complaints if we have a tenant that's in the home and they're having issues with certain things. They bring it to our attention. That does prompt us to contact the property owner and then perform, not an annual inspection and not a surprise inspection, but schedule an inspection to go in and see what's going on. But I can most definitely look into, to an annual. That's not a problem.
Anything else, Mr. Wade?
Done.
Counsel, additional question for Mr. Key? If there are none, thank you, Mr. Key. I'm going to open up for public comments. If anyone from the audience would like to come forward and speak to the council on item number 18, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. So this was more of a presentation, right? There's no actions to be taken, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Just for the record, at 8:29, Mr. Allen excused himself from the meeting. Moving on to the next item, item number 19, that is, receive status update regarding the timeline implementation of the police department chief.
Counselor. Mayor. The two items on the agenda tonight were a big step for us. Basically, everything is completed that we need to be completed on the vehicles. So as soon as they show up, they'll start getting upfitted and graphics and all that stuff. We're starting to move out of our little room that we have operational at the PD, and we're starting to work on some renovations and some fixing drywall and stuff like that for my office. And we're also looking at FFNE now, or the sergeant's office, some cubicles and things like that. And we're finding out some outlets aren't working, that we need to get an electric company out there to repair, and so on and so forth. Got a second generator company that is supposed to be sending us a quote that came out last week. So we're kind of waiting on that. It's, that's one of those things that seems to be all over the spectrum from 200,000 to 10,000. So we're trying to find what we need and what we, if we need to fine-tune it. If it's over 50,000, you know, we're going to have to go out for bids, but right now I don't know if it's going to be over 50. I have chiefs of similar-sized departments saying they went to a generator store and got what they needed for less than $10,000. So I'm just kind of trying to get a feel of where we're, where we're going to be. Our phone lines, I'm working with Joseph. Right now, we don't have a designated line to the police department. I don't have a direct line for my office. The phone rings, it rings in the whole building. If I pick it up, it's Dallas County Sheriff's Office wanting to talk to one of their deputies, or if one of the deputies picks it up, it's someone that wants to talk to the police chief. So we're kind of just trying to figure it out right now. I'm really operating on my cell phone, I'm giving that out for just about everything. But we're working on that. The sergeants are working on some body armor, we're fine-tuning that, trying to get, there's so many different body armors and levels out there that we, and we've probably pretty much figured out where we want to go with that, and they're working on getting quotes for those now. And the third sergeant that will be coming on in March next month will be primarily focusing on our recruiting efforts, where we're going to go, what's our target area of recruitment, so on and so forth. The only thing that is not, I don't want to say not on schedule, but that's out of my control at this point, is the dispatch. We're waiting on the survey and the study to be done to see if it's feasible for Mesquite. So until that's done, I can't move forward on any type of RMS CAD system. We don't, we can't train, hire and train anybody until we can operate and be dispatched by somebody. So that's the only thing that's kind of still up in the air. It's also, we've got TCIC, NCIC, Tlets paperwork on hold. We don't know who to fill out our non-terminal agreement with yet, because we don't know who's dispatching for. So that, we're kind of waiting on that. If that moves along as anticipated, if the study gets done in a timely manner, then we should be able to get that part of what we're trying to do in line with everything else and move forward with our timeline. And the radars have arrived, like I said, that it just, the cars are ready to go as soon as they come off the line.
Chief, I know it's a lot of work, especially dispatch, uncertainty, I understand that. I know you guys are working the best we can. So it sounds like we are on schedule so far, to the best of our knowledge?
Everything else...
And cost-wise, we are within, within our budget, at least the best we can?
Yeah, the bottom line is definitely within, we're saving quite a bit on certain things, and certain things we're a little over, so, but bottom line is, we're doing pretty well.
That's a big deal. We appreciate you. Counsel, any question for chief? Mr. Wade?
Maybe not necessarily for the chief, but for me, for town manager. With the promotion of Sergeant Evans, are we down a deputy? Are we being supplemented by DSO for that loss?
Yes, our contract remains the same, and so we actually, you know that Tillery was promoted, and he's overseeing operations here. And I actually just met the new traffic officer that came in, so yes, they are backfilling as per our contract. And we did have our first meeting with the consultant with Mesquite, us and the consultant team for dispatch, and they're doing a lot of discovery right now. And Joseph, our IT director, met with their IT director, so we're actively working that, but it is something that's not as much in our hands as we'd like. But we're doing everything we can to prompt a quick decision in that area, and I think we made our desires for that to happen pretty clear in the meeting, so.
Mr. Clark?
So a few weeks ago, we were discussing, just, we're trying to figure out if Mesquite was going to be interested in working with us on dispatch. It just sounded like they are interested in...
It's still a while to continue.
Well, we have, yeah, we have an ILA signed with them, their council and their city manager have said that they are interested. You know, we're working on more of a staff level, and right now, you know, the big thing for them is to get the study done, for the study to tell them what do they need to do in order to provide us with this service. So they need to know how many staff members they need to hire, they need to know if they need to add an additional console, you know, how to set it up in their system. So those are all things that this consultant will do, and, you know, I think they need to hear that information to help them make their final decision. But, you know, all, you know, indications are that, you know, we're moving forward, it's just, we wish everything was done and, you know, signed on the dotted line so that chief could move forward, but we just don't want to invest in that equipment until we get a 100% from them, because it's costly equipment. So we're waiting to see. Anything you want to add, sir?
All right, thanks.
Are there any questions from counsel? Thank you, chief. I can open up for public comments. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public comments. Chief, again, thank you for all the work you do. It's a lot. We made significant progress. We're bringing in staff, tripled our staff, which is good, so good progress. Moving on to the last item, that's 20, mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items. Counsel? Mr. Clark?
So regarding the downtown committee, I'd like to ask that we resume the downtown committee ASAP, get that going. Also, originally, we had just one town council member on it, so I'd like to ask to be put on that, if the council could agree to that, I'd like to join that committee. Then the last thing is...
I thought we had two.
No, I think we just had one council member on that committee, was Councilmember Allen.
Okay.
So we can put that on the next agenda, just, we can put it on the consent agenda.
Okay. I attended ad hoc.
Got it.
So then the last thing is, I'd like to propose that we put a bid out, the downtown committee had discussed it, but put a bid out to get a downtown concept plan, bring a consultant in, and work, work with a consultant to help develop a plan.
So it can be one agenda item, Ms. Catherine?
Yes, sir.
It's going to be two separate items?
It'll be two separate items, but I'll put them on the next agenda if that's acceptable.
Okay. So, Mr. Clark? Counsel, any other agenda items? Okay, if not, it is fine, but now it's time, it's 8:51. Can I have a motion to adjourn the regular session for February 10th?
Motion to adjourn the meeting for February 10th.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman, second. Second by Ms. Egan, to adjourn the regular session for February 10th. All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed 5-0. Mr. Allen and Mr. Fincher absent. Now it's time, it's 8:52, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, staff, great job, again.